All right, Michael, we should be live in a couple of seconds here.
Is Matt here yet?
Matt is here. You're good to go.
All right, this is Michael Crouch, opening the meeting of the Plan, uh, Newville Borough Planning Commission on November the 11th, 2020. I do not, I'm, I'm actually driving home right now, you, uh, using my phone to connect to the meeting, so I don't have an agenda in front of me or anything else, so. I guess we should do a roll call first, and I, uh, just to do that, I'll just have each of you call out who is, uh, is present.
Okay, Jack Erickson.
Bobby Olson.
Shannon Shockey, zoning officer.
And Matthew, are you?
Matt, can you hear us? He's, I see his picture, but he's not responding. Matt?
I think he froze, he dropped off on my screen.
Yeah, I think he bounced out, but I'll let him back in as soon as he comes back.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I can, we can assume he's gonna be on, I think.
Alrighty, uh, what is the first item on the agenda, Jack?
Well, it's citizen comments, um, Scott, is there anything so far?
I don't see any citizens even on, uh, right now.
That's a negative, there's nothing, nothing on the ascend.
Okay, so the next is the minutes, um, and approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2020 regular monthly meeting. I will confess that I woke up this morning realizing that I was supposed to produce them. I had forgot Bobby wasn't there last month, and so I did produce them, and I sent them to Lucy probably about 15 minutes ago, uh, and then I sent them out to all, well, early in the afternoon, actually, and then I just sent them to all of you about 15 minutes ago. So I'm sure nobody's had a chance to look at them. We can either take the time to do it, or we can postpone it till the next meeting, whatever, right, wherever your pleasure is.
If, um, yeah, I, I don't have, uh, I can't review them myself right now, so I don't know if, uh, Bobby, you, or Matt, you want to look at them and, uh, just verify that. You know, if you think they're, they look good, make a motion to approve them.
Okay, I'm trying to open it up right now, I wasn't there, so.
Yeah, I just sent them, uh, attached to, uh, one of Scott's, um, Zoom accounts, because that's the only way I could get everybody's email address quickly.
Okay, I will, um, make a motion to accept them, to approve them. Everything's on air.
Okay.
All right, uh, motion, uh, need a second.
Well, I'll, I guess I'll second them since I wrote them.
I think, uh, I guess, uh, with the three of us, I think, uh, I should confirm is, uh, we do have a quorum, correct?
Uh, no, you need four.
Yeah, I think that's right.
You need four.
Okay, so we can't, so, so then we really can't take action until Lucy gets on here anyway.
That's true.
Right.
All right.
Next topic is old business.
What is the next order of business then?
It's old business, uh, I see nothing listed here, um, so that would move us to new business, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, don't remember anything left over from last meeting.
Um, and the new business, uh, item on here is presentation of the Newville Borough zoning ordinance rewrite by Troy Truax. Troy, are you on?
I don't think Troy is, has joined yet.
Troy, Troy's traveling, he said he probably would not be on, uh, plus it's also, it's also federal holiday, I don't think, um, some other folks are gonna be on either.
Yeah, uh, Kirk, uh, Kirk sent a email earlier in the day that he wouldn't, probably not gonna make it. Well, we're zooming right through the, uh, agenda here, uh, and he. Any correspondence?
I, I haven't received any, uh, and Lucy did not mention any when she emailed me earlier, so.
Right, okay, and then, uh, the zoning officers' report, thank God, uh, Shannon is here.
Here, so we can get that.
And we do have this report, so, uh, Shannon, do you wanna tee it up?
Well, have you, uh, has everybody had a chance to review it at all?
Yes.
There's not a lot, uh, new going on, uh, most of the stuff is fin- finishing up. Bulldog Academy's done now, it's complete at both one and seven, convenience store down there at, uh, on Broad Street, they're coming along pretty good, they're, uh, she admits that she was a little, uh, overzealous for saying three weeks last month, um, but she's gotten in through a few, uh, of the more inspections coming out, uh, they've, they started, you know, closing up the walls and, and the electrical's been passed, um, the floors in, uh, so they're still slowly moving along, uh, but at a much greater pace now, so, uh, would expect to see them over the next month or so finishing up. Edmore Fuels is basically done, if you haven't driven by the, uh, concrete pad, that's done, uh, 25 to 31, uh, East Main Street is still in the continuous stage, they have, uh, cleared up the carport a bit, not to the best point that they could be at, but it is better, um, and the, uh, other two units are still being, uh, taken care of. Demolition and Return to Grade to 111 has been complete, I would expect to see him in here soon with some plans, um, and then, uh, the completion of the new, uh, handicap spot and, uh, uh, up to the trailhead has, was done by Low Barn Associates there at the, uh, trip, Rails to Trails. I would like to say that I hadn't received anything further from, uh, Ship Daddy, which was when I had created this report. About an hour later is when I did receive some communications from them, I believe, uh, Fred did go ahead and pass out what they had submitted. I've had further communication with them as of today, they were just got, deciding whether or not to come in and make public comment tonight, and now they are at the point where after my review letter, if you, uh, were not copied on that, I can make sure that everybody gets a copy of my review letter, that they will, um, most likely be changing again to where they will not be doing it in phases, and they just wanna focus on the phase, on the, uh, you know, purchase of the property and getting themselves in there and not worry about the other two phases because of the fact of them trying to list it as future phases and having an unknown out there, I was trying to explain to them, I said, we can't do a development or site plan that way, where we don't know what is coming in the future, we can't approve something that we don't know what it is, um, and they were understanding to a point of that, I think that, um, with the group that's there, you know, hopefully they, they, as of today, they decided they wanted to try to meet with me again, um, and basically, from what I'm gathering, start over again, the concerns that I would receive from that was that, uh, now they're talking about potentially being a manufacturing use as well as a, uh, e-commerce fulfillment center. So they're not sure if they have to change the use, and to which I explained, they will still need to change the use, uh, they really are trying to find a way to not do land development, I believe. And I'll meet with them next week at some point, and we'll try to sit down and go through what actually needs to be done for this, to go, to, to move forward to the planning commission, I just, uh, I wanna make sure that they, this is a large project, they need to go through this the right way.
Shannon, what does it mean that they don't wanna go through, I saw that in their engineer's report, um, what does it mean that they don't want to go through the line, they're asking for a waiver on land development requirements, what does that mean?
Well, they wanna just do a site, they're trying to just do a site plan development with the existing, because they're not changing the building. And then just upgrade the inside, go through the, um, they do wanna go through, you know, used and occupancy and certification and that, you know, the regular inspections you would get from the building code agency, but at the same time, um, if we were to give them any of those approvals without them going through land development, we're approving a, you know, it's a change in use first off, and we're approving the use of a building where they're stating that they're only gonna use 40,000 square feet, but how are we gonna limit that, them to that without anything in, in a development or on, on, in a plan? Um, and that's where my main concerns are coming back, keep coming back to is, is that you can tell us all you want that you're gonna limit yourself to that 40,000 square feet, but we need something on paper that, you know, that, that tells us, this is what's gonna happen here, this is what's gonna happen, you know, with this section of the building, and this is what's going on at the other end of the building. You know, we've done phased developments before in all kinds of municipalities, but those always have a final plan, and you go move into the next plans as you, you know, finish up the first and second phases, but you don't have unknown plans, you know, there may be a future development listed, but it is specific as to what that future development is, and that way you can plan accordingly.
I see, so they will have to go through land development, because even if they're not changing the use of the building.
I'm, I'm not seeing any way for them to go around it, but again, that is back to you guys, um, you know, you can give that waiver, um, but, you know, when you do that, you, you know, I would hold them to everything, if you do that, I would hold them to everything on the site development plan that, that is in the, you know, zoning side of it, um, but in my opinion, as a zoning officer, I would not allow them at this point to, um, get away, I would not recommend that they get a waiver.
What's the risk of, uh, waiving the land development plan, what could happen?
Well, um, you can miss a lot of things, you can miss the trap, the, the traffic circulation, you can miss the traffic study, um, you know, the fact that they're coming in now on their memo stating that they're only expecting one tractor trailer a week when their first study that they paid for came in saying that they were going to have 18 tractor trailers a week, that's quite a dramatic change, um, and I understand that they don't like the first study that was done, but going from 18 to one is quite a change, and I remember when these gentlemen were in here for the, you know, their introductory, I don't remember them ever saying that it was only gonna be one a week, they were adamant that it would be a few, and they, they, they were talking about how they could control when it came, um, and how often they came, but they did not say just one.
Yeah, I would look.
No, in fact, in fact, they, they were saying they have more than one at their current location.
I believe so.
Yeah, they were saying, they got, they have about three semis a week at their current location, um, and, uh, they're also saying that they have, uh, they were expecting, uh, they have a couple of hundred employees in a few years, uh, now they're saying they're never gonna go above 20, I think the number is, so, there are some discrepancies that need to be looked at here.
And with all of that, that would keep me saying I would not recommend they have a waiver, so, just because of the discrepancies and, and, and the, uh, changes that have, that we've seen in the last month without anything in writing, just, you know, from just the traffic study to this and from their initial meetings and public statements, it's something that I would say we need to make sure that we watch.
So, uh, so what I hear you saying is, they need to give us a firm plan for the complete usage of the building, otherwise, we're at risk that they can pretty much do anything they want with the other 100,000 square feet.
Well, we're at risk of having them in there and us, ha, are, we're coming back as an enforcement, and what are we enforcing, and we need to have something to enforce.
I see, yeah, so.
You know, I mean, I still think that these guys are, you know, they're well-intended, and I, I really do think that, but I think that we need to make sure that what's coming in, we, we understand what's coming in, and that we're able to enforce and, and keep them to that. You know, the, the area over there, if we bring in something that goes way off the, you know, from just that warehouse, they just use that 40,000 square feet to whatever goes into the future development, um, could dramatically affect the traffic, the neighborhood, everything, you know, we really need to know that.
So where do you think, uh, where do you think things sit with them at this point?
At this point, I'm supposed to meet with, uh, FSA Engineering, uh, next week, uh, they sent me an email, uh, already with the, uh, commitment date that they want me to look at, I have to, they sent it about an hour ago, I have not been able to verify whether or not I'll be able to meet with them at that time, uh, but I will, at some point next meet, try to have a pre-conference with them to sit down, really grasp what they wanna do, and that way I can direct them on which way to move forward, I still think that, you know, my, my initial thought is to send them through land development, I know that they're going to want to explain to me why they don't need to go through land development, and, you know, they would have to do a very good job of that, um, but that's kind of where I'm, you know, where my, my recommendations are at this point, um, and then I will get with them at that point, my, uh, concern again today was I just, we still, you know, according to Justin from, from FSA, he, he, over the last month, has really grown to understand their business, um, and he feels that it's completely different than what he thought it was when he first came on a month ago, so again, you know, that to me says, well, we need to slow them down a little bit, get them on paper on exactly what's going on, so we all know what we're, what we're dealing with before it's moved forward.
Yeah, it sounds like they're sort of changing stories about, um, impacts and even what they wanna do there, um, so if you, uh, waive the land development requirements, you know, you might find them doing so, some things that, uh, we'd be pretty concerned about, well, I would, I mean, personally, um, I would not wanna do that, like, waive that land development requirement, uh, certainly before you have some more information from them, um, and, I don't know, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Um, Shannon, when a plan is submitted, I'd say it's a three-phase plan, and it gets approved, but that's land development, whatever. What if, you know, say it's got like a five-year, um, scope for the development of it? If in a year or two, they're going, oh, man, I'd like, we'd really like to do this instead, could they come in and amend it and get approval to amend it, or does that not happen?
You can, uh, try to say this the right way, typically with an approved land development plan, once it's approved, there's about, I think it's a five-year protection that you, that the developer has, that they can continue to develop it as it was approved. After five years, if there's been no development further than what, than the last, that, you know, then since when it was approved and they're beginning initial development, um, then they actually have to go back to land development no matter what, because that five-year protection is gone. If, um, they come through there over that first two years and they decide they wanna do something different to amend it, yes, they can, but it's just like anything else, they'd have to come back through land development to amend it. Typically with these phased plans, and I think, what, as I was talking with Justin today, they're, they're trying to get out of this phased, uh, thought process, because we need to know the final, like, anytime we've done, we usually do this in subdivision of, you know, land, but like, when you're doing a land development for a, um, residential section, um, or neighborhood, and they come in in three phases, you know, where they have 100 houses and then another 100 houses and so on. To see it in, you know, in this, you know, I've even seen that in commerce parks, where you have three or four different buildings, but in one building, it's, you know, it, it's still something very unique, as they knew it was, and they presented it that way, but I've never seen it where the final plan wasn't known, because you have to know what, what you're actually
Right.
going to be holding them to.
I understand that, I just, I'm trying to look at it from their point of view, they're going like, oh, man, we got this 40,000 square feet, that would just, that would be so pretty for us, and then we'll figure out what to do with the rest of the building, man, I don't know if that's what they're thinking, but that's if, you know, I think that's what I'd be thinking.
I think it is a good bit of what they're thinking, and they can do something like that if they were to say, this is going, we're gonna plan this to be retail, and this is going to be a retail store, they don't have to tell us what store or anything like that, so they can keep it open in the sense of what type of retail, if that was what they were doing with the section of the ware, of the 100,000 square feet.
Sure.
But at least then we would be able to say, this section is retail, this section is this, it can't just be future development.
Okay, I got you, I got you, um, 'cause I'm thinking something could come up that is a, you know, is a financial good move for them to use it for, and they're going, oh, man, we gotta go back and ask if we can do this, um, so that would be okay, my other question is, are they, they are buying the property, is that correct?
I believe they're, they're, the way that it was explained to me was that they were going to initially lease for a certain amount of months, a- as they pursued financial backing to buy the property, now from what I'm understanding is they're just looking at purchasing the property.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'll get more clarification hopefully on that next week, but that was the last conversation I had, was that they are looking to purchase the property.
Okay, all right, 'cause I, we haven't, um, I, I would think they would have to have all these ducks in a row before they would, I don't know, or have an agreement of sale with, depending on what, you know, the planning commission or what, what they approve or not, if it doesn't get approved, then the, the agreement of sale is, is that right, Matt? That you can't, that they could do that, a conditional agreement of sale maybe?
Yeah, I'm sure they have something that's conditional.
If you have anything.
Well, I don't know what they have, but I'm, I'm assuming it's condition.
Okay, I was, those were my two things, as I'm, I'm trying to look at it from their point of view, and you know, it's a lot of space, and, you know, they're very concentrated on what they're doing. So that was, that was my concern, that's all.
Yeah, one of the other things that I noticed in the, uh, in the land, in the, um, the map, the two maps they gave us, uh, you recall, we had conversations with them, it's, it's reflected in the engineer's report as well, um, we had conversations with them about, um, you know, having negotiations about using some of that space, uh, for, you know, purposes, uh, for mixed-use purposes, and we've talked about things like, you know, a microbrewery or a bike repair shop, or, you know, a variety of different things, the assumption being, I think, that, that the side of the building along the trail trail would be ideal for that, um, but when you look at their plan, pretty much all taken up with parking spots. You know, so where are you gonna put them, where are you gonna put these amenities that we're talking about? There's a little space, uh, that they have there, that's, doesn't have parking in it, but they have parking them both up against the wall of the building and up toward the trail, so you know, it's not, it's not gonna be very appealing space for somebody to come in and put a, you know, wine, a wine tasting place next to, um, 40 cars in a asphalt parking lot. So I think, the point being, I think we have to look carefully at this and, uh, and talk some more before we, uh, are comfortable to move forward.
Well, I, I agree, and I am very thankful that Shannon is, uh, heading it up.
Yeah, he's doing a good job on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause.
If you're done with, uh, if we're done talking about this for this one, I had a, um, smaller, uh, thing come in today, it just a land use permit, but, uh, it dealing with, um, insurance, their, uh, Nathan's Shoemaker on, uh, Shoemakers Insurance there on Fairfield, um, they would like to, uh, relocate the monument sign and update their monument sign, um, I don't have any issue with that, but with it, the reason, one of the main reasons why they were doing that was to, um, also, uh, get into, they're gonna probably add additional parking there, and I just wanna let you guys know that's probably coming up, um, I don't see any, foresee any reasons for them not to be able to relocate, they're within the setbacks of what they wanna do, uh, the sign, I think, is a nice new monument sign, you know, i- it's just better than what they have, and gives them a couple additional parking spaces when they relocate it to the side there a little bit.
Their parking lot all macadamned. So it wouldn't have anything to do with, um, impervious surface, it's already.
With the stormwater, there will be a little bit, I, I've looked at this already, they're, they're not looking at adding, like, uh, you know, it's not over 100 square feet, um, it's where they have their, their sign right now, um, there is a grass spot around, circle around the sign, um, and that's, they would want to macadam that, they'll still have their, uh, 40% um, coverage, they'll still be under the 40% maximum coverage, um, you know, with the relocation of it, and that gives them, instead of the people coming in off the left or off the right and going around the monument sign, he'll be able to actually put some spaces in the handic, he wants to add a handicap spot, which he doesn't currently have, so, he'll go, I think, from four spaces to about eight or nine, so. Other than that, um, the only other thing that wasn't on the zoning report was that I also today got back the stormwater, uh, in the, uh, plot map and everything from 24 Gilbert, where our house, you know, we discussed it last month, where, I'm sorry, 24 Shepherd, where the Gilberts are going to be building their house, uh, that all's falling in, you know, to the line, there's no concerns at all with it, everything looks very good, they've gotten approvals from, uh, Newville Water and Sewer Authority, and, you know, everything's moving forward, just wanna let you guys know where that stands, um, I think that's everything.
Yeah, there's quite a, a list of, uh, in our, I did not come through it, but I, two pages of, uh, of projects, I guess.
Oh, you went, yeah, that, and that, the, those land use proj, those are the, um, zoning permits that have been issued all year, so, um, that's up to date.
Cool, very good. Oh, who's getting the roof-mounted solar system?
Scott.
I'd like to meet, yeah, see how that's going.
He said, uh, that the conservative estimate is that it'll pay for 93% of their, um, electrical bill, but they'll probably wind up having electricity to sell back, so.
That's awesome.
I don't think it's going well, they're about to flip the switch, apparently.
Great, that's wonderful. Um, okay, anything else, hey, thank you all for starting without me, I apologize for being late, um, anything else for Shannon, or Shannon, anything else for us?
I'm good, and if you're okay with the holiday, I'm gonna sign off here if you guys are good.
Yep.
Thanks a lot, Shannon.
Thank you, you guys have a great night.
You too.
Thanks.
Um.
Lucy.
Yeah.
Did you have any correspondence that, uh, I did not know of any, but are you aware of any correspondence?
No, I, there was none in our packet.
Okay, I, well, sometimes, sometimes Fred will email something to you that, after, you know, after the packet comes out, so.
Yes, I, well, Jack, I'm not like near my computer during the day, I should probably start taking it with me on Wednesdays, um, but Jack emailed me the minutes from last month's meeting today, Fred did email me, um, I think it was yesterday, something he thought that the planning commission would be interested in, so I will forward that all to you, it came in from, uh, the county, uh, from Barbara Hershey, I believe, I didn't get her email read either, from the planning, County Planning Commission.
Okay.
So I will forward that to all of you, um, uh, so that, that would be cor, that, that, it's not really correspondent, it's an article, and he thought we would be interested, I did not read the whole thing yet.
Okay.
And, and Lucy, I, um, I apologize to everybody, I, uh, got, I started looking at the package this morning and wondered where the minutes were, and realized, I was supposed to write them, so, so I did, and I've, I've sent them to you, and then I've sent them to everybody else, uh, about half an hour ago, so.
So we have, we have not approved them yet, Lucy.
Okay, Bobby, um, well, has everyone read them?
Yes, but we also need to not only approve those, but approve July and August, 'cause there wasn't enough of people there last month.
That's right.
So.
All right, yeah, anybody wanna make a motion to approve with, well, we didn't have an August meeting, so it's just July, I'm responsible for Septembers and haven't done it. Right, do we, didn't we skip August for a meeting? Yep, okay, so it's just July and October. 'Cause we still are waiting for Septembers.
Okay. And we'll just have, we'll have to amend the October one then to say that we weren't waiting for the August ones, there was, there wasn't any, 'cause it, it reads that we were waiting to approve the August minute meetings.
Oh, well then, let's, we, can we approve it without amendment, without correction, the minutes?
I just brought him up to look at them.
Okay, yeah, well, my notes said we had to do it, but I guess, I guess we don't.
You probably did July's, 'cause I think that was probably the last one I attended.
Right, okay.
So do you think we already approved July?
No, we didn't have enough of people there to approve them, and I, I sent them late.
Oh, okay, okay, good, I mean, not good, but.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so do we want to approve, Joe, do I kinda get a motion to approve July and October minutes?
Well, I'd make a motion, although, uh, you know, I've had the benefit of, uh, Well, I'd make a motion, although, you know, I've had the benefit of having written them. So I know it's in.
And I just read them, so I'll second them.
If people prefer to defer, that's okay too, I guess.
All, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Good. And I, I'll try and get Septembers then. So we have those for next month. I'm also going to make sure I'm home by quarter of seven at the next one in case ship daddy actually does come in. My other question to you to think about is the borough office, the meeting room is being updated. And Jack, you can tell us about that to, or Michael to be COVID safe or at least not COVID friendly. And would any, is everybody okay with zooming? Or would you want to, and I don't know when, I don't, I don't know how comfortable I am with it. But I, I did want to just put it out there to see what, what anybody thinks. I kind of like doing it this way, but I mean. Okay, Zoom. Jack?
I would prefer Zoom. I think, you know, the update that's being, that's going on for the borough office, we're buying an air, air clave, I guess it's called, which will basically sterilize all of the surfaces. It's not really an air related cleansing device, but it will take care of all the surfaces. We are also putting in what is called a smart TV, which would allow us to have meetings in the room where you know, folks could participate from outside the room on their laptops and be able to see the room. So it would allow virtual participation at the same time that a meeting was going on. So that's another option. In any event, I would probably want to continue to participate by, by Zoom. And I think the smart the smart TV is going to allow that. So that's the nice thing about it is we could do, do both depending on the preferences of the committing.
All right. I just, I, how about you, Michael?
I'm, I've been in favor of in-person meetings for several months. So but I'm in the distinct minority on both in, in this council and, and not as quite as much of minority on, on the borough council, but the, the consensus so far for most, most members has been to, to continue by Zoom, but there is, there is more, the council was starting to, to lean more and more toward especially once the smart TV is there, we can, those of us who are comfortable meeting in person will meet there. And the rest can participate via, via electronic means. I've, I've been in, in part of three different meetings in the council, in the meeting room, in the la, within the last few weeks already. Smaller meetings and, and meeting, a meeting with regard to the potential new building for the borough and so forth. So it doesn't bother me in the least.
Okay. I I've been watching the borough council meetings on YouTube. So I've heard the discussions about it. Did anything come up about an air cleaner, an air disinfecter, an air purifier and I?
That, that came up at the last meeting and I don't know, Fred said he had information about a unit that would had the K is, had the capability of removing microscopic contaminants. So, but I haven't, haven't seen anything more from him with regard to that. So I'm not sure what the status on that is. But that is, that has been in discussion.
We have that, had that conversation and it's still inconclusive, but in fact, I think that's a, if we could get my own opinion, we had this conversation on the borough council. My opinion is that the air clave is not going to be as valuable to us as an air cleaning device. Like a HEPA filter device, because the, I mean, the air clave helps in the sense that it disinfects the whole room, but then as soon as everybody, somebody else walks into the room, you're starting all over again. So if you come into the room after it's been air clave, you're not going to find any problems left behind from the last folks. But you're potentially bringing in your own. So you know, it's not useless, but it's not, but I think the thing that would really matter is a significant airflow in an enclosed space. I mean, that's
They auto clave or whatever it's called is also for like the ambulances and the fire trucks and stuff. We're just talking about like using it for them. What? It doesn't matter. I just wanted to kind of get a feel for it. We have a quorum tonight, so that's nice. I, but Jay, I, I miss Jay. And I, I don't know that he'll be back until we're in person. I'm, I'm in person safely. I don't think he'll even come back. I don't know though, but I'll I just wanted to get a.
And that's, that's part of the reason Jim hasn't been, been in the meetings as well is because he I don't know whether he would attend in person right now with the health issues he's got either, but he doesn't, he doesn't have the capability to participate this way. So.
He could, he could call. There, there's a phone number. I mean, I, I'm in another organization that you just, if you don't zoom, you can just dial, you know, call up and be on the phone.
Well, and maybe nobody's explained that to Jay and Jim.
Well, I have the Jay.
Okay.
But anyway, whatever. I just wanted to run that past and I will contact Jay and Jim both and let them know they can that they can call.
Well, and I, I should mention the, the, I told council, I, Jim's term is up this year. And I, I spoke to him. He is not going to renew his, his term on the planning commission here. Largely because of his health issues. He's just trying to cut back and, and reduce, reduce workload. So not sure. We're still working on finding some new members. If anybody has any recommendations, please forward them to me.
All right. All right.
So Mike, we don't have any other candidates at the moment?
I have two, two folks I'm going to talk to, actually just possibly a third one, just learned of. So I do have some folks I'm, I'm going to talk to here within the, the remainder, the remainder of this week, but I'd, nothing, nobody has basically I need to ask them if they are, are willing to even consider it. But their, their names that were given to me is, is people that may be interested in, in you know, contributing to the community and so forth. So.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you for the, for your input. I just wanted to do a quick survey and check it out. And Matt, you're okay staying Zoom?
I'll do whatever you want me to do. How's that?
Nice.
Cause there's already a few places where I have to go to in-person meetings. So, but I'm fine doing it through Zoom. That's not a problem.
All right. But if we do in-person, you, well, you, yeah. I'm interested to see how the smart TV in the council room works.
Yeah. My only concern with meetings is that we, we consistently have quorums, especially as ship daddy comes in. So what, whatever we need to do to try to make that happen would be a good thing.
I should be able to attend now. I changed jobs.
Oh, cool.
Did you really?
Yes, I did.
Congratulations.
Well, I, I, I haven't changed jobs, changed employers. I've sort of changed jobs though, and my schedule is shifting a little bit more to daytime instead of the, the evening work. So hopefully that will enable me to, to be here a little, little more consistently as well.
That's great.
Oh, good. And I will just adjust my schedule so that I can be home and on my computer at 6:45 on the second Wednesday of the month.
I'm still retired, so it all works for me.
Oh, all right. Is there anything else? And what did I miss?
The new business, Troy Truax is not available tonight. He is traveling, Scott said. So he is not available to present anything to us tonight.
Okay.
That was it.
Good.
So the only, the only thing you have missed then so far is the adjournment.
Oh, cool.
Thanks for showing up.
Do I have a motion? To adjourn? Michael, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.